Good evening and welcome. We'd like to start the October 7th, 2015 Council of Governments Agenda with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as
Our first order of business is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial and will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or interested party may request that an item be removed from Consent Agenda for further discussion. Are there any items that the Board would like to have pulled? Any staff member? Any interested parties in the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilmember Kearney, seconded by Councilmember Meardies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number six, Public Comment. Five minutes per person. Comments shall be limited to items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda that the council can handle? Come forward, please state your name and where you're from.
Well, okay.
Welcome.
I hate to be the first one because who knows what happens after that. Bill Mason from Murphys.
Okay.
In fact, I know two of the guys on this end of the table, but everybody else is new to me. Isn't there somebody missing?
Councilmember Debbie Ponti will be late, but she will be joining us.
Okay, I was just curious.
And Councilmember Hemminger is not available this evening.
Well, I've been here for 31 years, or 34 years now to be exact, at Murphys, and this is the mystery committee that I don't know anything about. I served with our distinguished supervisor, Steve, on the Planning Commission, and he went up to bigger and greater things. And I kept myself retired and cognitivo. And I know Tim from Arnold because, like I said, I live at Murphys. And that's what I'm here for. I'm here to, I went through this, interesting how this committee works, how people are appointed, and how they hold themselves responsible to the public. I mean, those are the voting public, and I'm not sure that's the case, but it's, like I say, I'm a new person here, and I was a little confused why there has been this rumor, I don't know if it's true or not, that District 3 was going to do without a permanent representative up there. They have a temporary one now, but a permanent one. And that is a concern for me because Murphys and the Ebbets Pass commercial viable part is beginning to put its act together and start to renew the commercial aspect of that area. When I came here in '81, and I picked up in '83, and rode along very well until things kind of hit the can when housing prices fell, gas prices rocketed, and people decided to spend their money wisely someplace else. And right now, Murphys just got over a great stop, which was not as big as it has been, but I think it's better when it's a little smaller than monstrous. And there are problems there that concern transportation. I don't want to go into it, but we need, just we need a permanent person to talk to. And Arnold is doing the same exact thing.
Mr. Mason, may I ask if you are actually addressing the council's Board of Supervisors' consideration of the citizen member appointment?
What I'm addressing is, I'm not, see, that's again, it is a, if what I heard was going to take place, Angels Camp will have three members.
Okay.
Wait, I'm not done yet, and District 2 will have two members. And just on the count of what I see of the seven up here, that's the majority, and the other districts are shut out.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to say is, as that is an agendized item for later in the program this evening?
I didn't see it in here.
It's number 17?
This where?
Number 17 on the back of the page.
Go on the back.
Turn it over.
Oh, well, see what happens when you retire.
That's okay.
And like I said, this is the first time I've been here.
Right. It's just a point of order that we try to address any items not on the agenda under public power.
I know, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'll wait back.
Okay.
But can you move it up a little?
In all due fairness, I've been requested to consider that already. I would like to have Councilmember Ponti here before I move it up. So I think when she joins us, we'll go ahead and consider it at that time.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, limited to items of interest to the public, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction, not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none. Item number seven, An Update and Presentation to the Council on the Acela Government Meeting Management Software and Discussion of the Council's Meeting Minute Format.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to introduce Drew Baker from Acela, who writes our presentation on the system.
Good evening, Council. My name is Drew Baker. I'm here from Acela. We're a government software company located in San Antonio. I'm here tonight to discuss our Legislative Management Suite. It's currently being used by Calaveras County, and I think that's where the interest came from. The Legislative Management Suite helps with the agenda process. I like to think of the process as three distinct phases. The staff report approval process, the creation of the agenda packet, and distribution of the agenda packet, and then finally minutes, and some sort of way to capture the decisions, in this case, of this council. We've been actually doing this for about 12 years, and we have 400 customers across the country within Calaveras County. And so we have a lot of experience helping folks get efficient and recognize savings in their agenda process. We do that through a very user-friendly yet powerful interface that utilizes Microsoft Word in the creation of staff reports. So folks within the council, government staff, can create these reports, submit them, and approve them all electronically. And these are some of the screenshots of the software itself. The packets are then published to an online portal that allows citizens, staff, and council members to retrieve their packets electronically if they choose. If you want to continue to receive your agenda packets in paper, there's still a lot of efficiencies to be recognized before that packet actually arrives in your hands. So a lot of efficiency happens pre-agenda and then in the agenda process. Also, this is a kind of a one-stop portal you can see for the city of Reno, for example. On that portal, you can personalize it to have a look and feel of your website. You can have the agenda, the agenda packet, your minutes document, and also video. And I think I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. The civics training portion is taking the video of your meetings and integrating them with your documents. So when a staff, council, or citizen wants to see, for example, item number 17 tonight, they don't have to scrub out and go to different parts and try and find their section of the video. They can actually just click on that number on the agenda, and the video will instantly pop up to that part of your meeting. So we find that this helps not only with the transparency, but helps reduce public requests for information. Now, when it comes to the council of yourselves, we have an iPad app that will help you read through your packets if you so choose to use it. This is a view of the iPad application. It instantaneously delivers your packet to your iPad or to your laptop. Or if you want to continue to use another third-party application to review your packets, you can. And like I said, you can recognize savings if just a few people are going to use the iPad app. Not everybody has to. This is another view of the agenda packet here. This is, in this case, this council member is actually reviewing the video of a previous And finally, you know, my slide got a little scrambled, but the real savings comes down to a process efficiency. So that process of creating staff report, printing it out, having people read it, sign off on it, now scan it, upload it again, can really help reduce your costs, both the real and sunk costs or personnel using the, utilizing this agenda process for 70% to 90%. Also, can reduce the paper, toning, scanning, collating, all those things related to that paper or manual process can get close to going away. And once again, and also that transparency part, you're now will kind of instantaneously allow the staff to upload all of your documents related to your agenda and make them searchable in a Google-style search to allow people to find anything they're interested in. That's it for me. I want to make this short and sweet, so is there any questions?
Council, do you have any questions on the Agenda software presentation?
We use it at the county, and I absolutely love it. At first, I was like, oh, my gosh, I need paper, I need paper. But now I don't want any paper. The agenda paper is helpful to be able to follow along, but the information and to be able to search and look for things saves a tremendous amount of time from a board member point of view when you want to go back and look at an agenda or minutes or something along those lines. It's been very, very helpful.
Oh, yeah.
So you can be self-sufficient, not, you know, kind of be dependent on somebody else gathering information. And, you know, it just saves tons of papers with getting those agenda packets out and such. So I highly recommend it.
Yeah, I chime in with Debbie and what she's just said. But I don't, we don't have the video portion. Is that something that we decided not to load, or?
Yeah, at first, I think when the county came on, they just wanted to do the agenda process, but you can always add on, it's modular, so, yeah.
Is there additional charges for having the video option?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And, I'm sorry, the county actually, when I spoke with the clerk, they're actually looking into the video part of it currently as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for it, not that I'm, that's why I was stumping for it initially. The case in point, when we started the, this meeting, I was going through my agenda earlier, and I was at the bottom of the agenda, and you started referring to the items at the front part of it. And I'm going like this, like crazy, to get to the front part of it, and it took me a good three, four minutes to get up there, so. And if you're bouncing around trying to find something or research it, and let's face it, these can be fairly technical agendas here. This is slick. Now, the issue would be, we have the iPads that the county's provided, so we could just put another app on for the COG correct. And you would also, you know, does COG want to buy the iPads for their other council members when they come to you would be the other question. Not part of that presentation, just another consideration.
I guess as a question, are the iPads provided to the council members as part of the Acela contract, or is those, are those independently needed if the council members so choose?
That's a completely separate transaction.
Okay.
And I've looked into the iPads and the pricing, and I can bring that to the council for consideration on price. And I've done a lot of research into it and consulted our check manager as well.
Okay. Councilmember Meardies.
The software is iPad-only?
Oh, no, you can actually use it on a laptop. And it will create a PDF that the staff can email you, or you can download the website. So if you want to use Android or other kinds of PDF, other apps, it'll still digest that and you can use those. We just have this iPad app that's specific to the iPad if you want to use it, but you're not logged into that.
I've never used one, but I'm game to try it.
It's really simple, honestly. Yeah, it's basically the touch of a finger and, you know, like if you've got questions on a fairly complicated agenda item, and you can bounce back and forth and find your information so fast, it's beyond belief. Like right now, I bounced around a little bit while you were talking, I got to go find number seven again. And so, you know, that wouldn't happen with this app. You just, you pull the agenda on the side and touch it, and it goes right to it.
Okay.
It would be nice not to be covered in paper.
Well, I was surprised when I read through this, too, the financial incentive for, I guess I thought more just how it helped me, but in the long run, it does save the council quite a bit of money.
Any further comments from the Board? The item was asked for a presentation of the information with possible direction. I'm hearing some very favorable comments about having this brought back, I would say, as a future agenda item for more consideration, perhaps with more details on the real costs. I know that attached to the agenda item were a sample, or an example cost of what the staff does for the paper side of the life here, as well as some sample minutes from other agencies as to what it looks like. Mr., can I probably, can you write your name down?
Baker.
Baker. Thank you for your presentation.
It's an honor, thank you.
And I think with no further questions, I think we're good.
Okay, so staff has their direction then to bring back to the November agenda the software terms and conditions, and also the budget information for budget information necessary to support the software and any needed computer equipment or tablets. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Any public comment? John?
Yes.
Public comment? Public comment?
Any public comment on the agenda item that we just concluded about the Acela presentation?
I just had one, Bill McManus, Calaveras Project. I just had one question about, obviously, the system is going to be installed. Is that correct?
No. What we asked for this evening was a presentation on what it was all about to educate ourselves.
Oh.
And we're asking that in the November meeting, that staff would bring back to the Board additional costs and details about the implementation, and at that meeting, we'll go ahead and actually make a decision, if the Board so chooses, to either implement it or postpone it as the Board sees fit at that time.
Okay, when you, when you're making the final decision on this package or the system, what about archives? Is there an additional budget required for archives? How far back are you going to go with COG archives that can be put on the system and available? Or are you starting with the day you turn it on, that's when the archives begin? Has there been any discussion about archives and how much to put on the system?
Well, I would say two things. One, we have a Calaveras COG website now that has archived minutes and agendas.
I know, and I hope the new system is a whole lot better than that one.
Point being, I would expect that Mr. Baker could probably address including historic information to the Acela system.
Yeah, it's actually a complimentary portion of the system. We'll take all of your digitized archived agenda material and upload it into the new portal that's a little easier to search, so it's a part of the cost.
Thank you.
And just speaking on that, you actually have a search by keyword as well, so we can upload, I think we have packets all the way to 2007, and we can upload those. And say you want to look at something that's regarding LTF, you can literally type that in there, and it'll pull up every time LTF was brought up in all the years of, uh, I have.
Knowing our alphabet soup, that would probably be quite a list.
Yeah. I think it's a broad one.
Any further public comment about the Acela Agenda Package presentation? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Fiscal Year 2015/16 Operations Budget Amendment Number One, presented by Melissa Ragio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff recommends the Council approve this year 15/16 Operations Budget Amendment Number One. It's incorporating previously approved amendments. The two reversions to this Operations Budget Amendment include the amendment to the Executive Director's Employment Agreement, and it includes the grant award for mobility management. Does the council have any questions? I'd like to answer.
Any questions about Operation Budget Amendment Number One? Any public comment regarding the Operations Budget Amendment Number One? Do I have a motion to approve the amended order of the Operations Budget Amendment Number One?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kearney.
Seconded. It's Councilmember.
Seconded by Councilmember Morris. That's who I heard first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve 6-0. It was requested that item number 17A, which was the, which is the staff report on the update to the council and the Board of Supervisors' consideration of the council member appointment, be moved up. I didn't do that initially because I wanted to have Councilmember Ponti available to also weigh in on this item, but out of courtesy to the public that is here, I'd like to have item number 17A addressed at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a verbal update to the Calaveras Council of Governments that the item to appoint public member, citizen member, I'm sorry, Justin Cantellano to the Calaveras Council of Governments was denied by the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors at their previous meeting, so I just wanted to provide that update to the council. We currently have the three vacancies that will be coming due. We have the existing vacancy that we've been trying to fill, and then we have our two sitting citizen members whose terms will be up, in hopes that they are also reapplying for those positions. But we are going through our process. The procedures are listed on our COG Board website, if anyone is interested in taking a look at that. The application is also available. There are deadlines for the application, so I would encourage those interested in applying to pay close attention to those deadlines. The item will be heard before the COG, at the December COG Board meeting. We anticipate appointments at that meeting with the new citizen members or returning citizen members to take their seats in February. So that is the update I wanted to make available to the Calaveras Council of Governments. I'm happy to answer any questions from the Board or from members of the public.
Comments from the Board?
Couple comments. I met with county council today, and it's my understanding that the issue will be readdressed at a Board of Supervisors' meeting sometime in the month of October. And then, you know, what I was hearing about a little bit about the recruitment process, I guess it's, you know, it is awkward to be a member of the community who's made an application to be kind of interviewed in front of the entire public. Somewhat a little, I don't know what the key word is, awkward. I, in the past, have been on committees to where there's been a subcommittee that has interviewed and then brought a recommendation to the Board. And that allows for a little bit more, I guess you might say, opportunity for a little bit more questioning, a little bit comfort level for the applicant. And I was just wondering if that's ever happened with COG or not. The other thing, or if it's even, you know, maybe council can ask, answer this, I know you can't have the majority of the Board present in a subcommittee, but anyway, who would be on that selection committee? But also, you know, there was lots of discussion about our applicants and representation for, you know, Calaveras County. And I know that sometimes there's a feeling here that Highway 4 corridor, particularly the Angels Camp area, is more heavily recognized or supported, or, you know, has more of a say on the COG Board, you might say. I've never looked at it that way. I've always looked at it as a regional approach to transportation. You know, Highway 4 is a huge, big portion of the county and in, on a regional approach to several, several counties as it goes through. So I don't know if there's any consideration, you know, we had some very good applicants apply in the last go-around. I mean, all of them would have been a nice addition to the Board, but we weren't able to do that because we didn't have the openings. And I don't know if there's something that can be done in the future, because it seems like there's a need or a feel for, quote, balance, if we want our public citizenship to, you know, represent an area of the county, if that's possible or not in our recruitment process, you might say. Or in our recruitment process and our questions and answers, do we want to be more focal on asking people not only where they live, but where they might work and play? Because I have lots of folks all, you know, live in the Coppropolis area, but they play and work in the valley. And we have some of that in the county, where you might live in particular area of the county, but you work on the other side of the county. And so I don't know if that can be part of the application process to get someone who is, you know, well-rounded or sees total county as a regional operation and not so much, you know, we got to have X amount in one district, or you got to live in this particular area of the county to have that balance at COG. So those are just some thoughts to throw out there and consider as we look at recruitment and look at our openings. It's hard enough to find people to fill our Board seats, and we certainly don't see any difference that in the COG as we have on a couple of our other committees and commissions and such coming from the Board. So I throw that out there for some consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Ponti. Other Board comments? Any comments from the public? You're welcome to come back up, Mr. Mason.
Marty Crane, Rancho, Valley Springs area. I was at the Board meeting when all this discussion was happening. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you so much for your comments. And I just wanted to say that there was some concern that District 2 would have too much representation. And having been a member of the CISTAC Committee for many, many years, I can tell you that one of the most difficult areas to serve with regard to transit is in District 2. So if there were more ideas on the committee to find solutions for that area, I say bring it on. But I totally agree with you, Debbie, Ms. Ponti Commissioner.
Debbie's fine.
Commissioner Ponti, that, that this is all a big regional thing. We should not be looking at little districts. You know, you totally nailed it when you said I could work in, say, Valley Springs and, and live in Angels. I know the whole county. So, thank you. Thank you.
Well, I did you get it right this time.
You're welcome.
In the evening, you're doing real well. As I was saying before, I was informed that I was in the wrong place at the wrong time, which is not unusual for me. Bill Mason from Murphys, District 3. I, back at the thing that I am, have to admit that this is all new to me. Even though I've been here for so many years, COG is something that has never crossed my path before. I don't know if it was because it was so well-run, or it didn't affect what I was doing. It could be either one of them. But what I was concerned about is the fact that parts of the county are different than the other parts. And there is no doubt that Murphys is a big part of Highway 4's commercial development. It's packed full of people on the weekends. White trees are the thing that makes things roll. And there are transportation problems. And actually, some people have asked me, and I've said, I have no idea who represents District 3. And I come to find out, there really wasn't anybody, or the plans were, there wasn't going to be. And I find it interesting that here is a group that spends a lot of money and deals with a huge amount of construction, and it isn't set up to represent the public in a district. You know, like in the planning commission, it's a pretty good example. Supervisor says, we're going to, I want this person, and the supervisor's elected and you get this person. So you know this one person to go to. And the number of seven was found to be interesting to me with two from Angels Camp City. And I don't know, which of the two of you are representing Angels Camp? Just one?
Well, there's, Ms. Follendart is also representing for West Colne as the alternate.
And I have no problem with that, but down the road, because when I, when I was working, I worked for PG&E, and Amador was part of the deal that I had to go to once in a while. And they have three cities in Amador. And they have three cities in Amador. And most people don't know that, Jackson, Amador, Sidney, and Ione. So would the same thing apply, that they would have six members? If that was the case, they would do it over there. I don't know. It just seems to me that it is confusing, and maybe just my age, that the representative isn't there. And when I looked at this, coming up that there was going to be retained three COG members in Angels Camp, and two in District Two, which is West Point, the one that got all burned up, which is a tragedy, and nobody in District Three, where, as I was saying before, that District Three, because of its Ebb and Pass thing, and the people in Ebb and Pass are beginning to get together and put their act together for the sole purpose of enhancing commerce along Highway Four. And we all know that commerce is directly related to transportation, if you're going to go pick something physically up and bring it home. But so that's the case where I was concerned that the people who are in that group don't have a place to go to, to talk to an individual person who is responsible for the well-being and the commercial viability of the District of District Three, whatever you call it. And that's where I was shocked, and I just went, "Ay, ay, ay, how is this working?" And I know that the board is directly responsible for the public's attitude on what's going on. And the Planning Commission is a little less because of their operation. And as far as I'm concerned, just what I see, and I'm not saying it is, the COG is the mysterious outfit out here that built a big bypass around Angels Camp, which is an interesting construction project, built a removal hazard at Pool Station, put a passing lane above Cottage Springs that nobody knew about. When I was on the Planning Commission, all of a sudden, here's a thing they did. And so that, to me, there was not a lot of coordination. And I see an agenda that I didn't realize it was going to be, is the wagon trail. There is an example, without a doubt, that if Highway Four was like it is in the Coppaopolis section, or by the Spencer Ranch, it would be a big boom for the commerce on Highway Four, because it wouldn't be hazardous, and it would be quicker to get here. And that should be a goal that is rocketed down here. But there doesn't seem to be, I mean, you read it and looked at this, and I know that's creeping along like a snail. Well, do half of it. Go from Pool Station Road to where you meet the big highway on the west, unless you've got at least a quarter of it done. But like I say, I'm new at this, and forgive me for being so stupid on the processes here. But I don't hold that responsibility of the public to be stupid on a process that you don't quite understand how it works internally. That should be a public thing that tells everybody, "This person represents District Three, or this person represents Angels Camp, and this person represents District Five, and somebody here represents District One, which is you." Those are bodies we can go to and say, "What is going on? Why is this taking so long? And you are very important, because transportation is the key to prosperity of this county." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments regarding the update to the council and the Board of Supervisors' consideration of the citizen member appointment from this public? Mr. McManus?
Bill McManus, Calaveras Project. I'd like to address some of the comments that Supervisor Ponte made. I want to make sure I heard her. I don't know if your microphones are on, or if the volume's down, or if I just, too hard of hearing. Said something about the interviews for the citizen members being too public, that it could be uncomfortable for these people. And, you know, I think all of you, whether you're a public, whether you're a citizen member, or whether you're from a governing board, have all had to face the public and answer difficult questions. Sometimes it's called an election, and some of you have been through that. Others who seek to be on a council or a board which has spending authority, which affects citizens, taxpayers' money, should face the strictest of interviews. We should know who they are. We should know what they want to do, what they believe in, just like you had to do in your elections, and that would be Supervisor Ponte and Supervisor Kearney and our esteemed officials from Angels Camp. So I don't think we should worry about the sensitivity to the candidates who want to be on this board and be responsible for making financial decisions on our behalf. If I could address one other item, in my humble opinion, and I don't know, you know, if I'm wrong, please tell me, but this agenda item came about because there appeared to be a rush to try to get someone approved on the COG Board. And since it seemed to be sideways to your bylaws, we had to rush to the Board of Supervisors and try to get them to set aside your bylaws to allow this person to be appointed to the COG. Now, if I'm mistaken, please tell me. And I think that was the nature of the report back from the Board of Supervisors, that in the absence of Mike Olivera, coincidentally, the supervisor from District Three, which we're all talking about right now, that the Board of Supervisors declined to do something contrary to the bylaws of the COG. Am I mistaken?
Actually, that is incorrect. This item has been before the COG Board, I want to say, for nearly a year now. The applicant that was under consideration by the County Board of Supervisors had come before this body three times to be considered as an applicant and be appointed as a citizen member. The COG Board ultimately did make that decision at their final round of interviews. We did go out multiple times trying to recruit and solicit more participation so that the COG Board would have more diversity and greater representation on the board, which was their initial goal. And so after several rounds, they decided to appoint Mr. Justin Cantolano. It was in compliance with the Joint Powers Agreement and the bylaws of the Calaveras Council of Governments, which specified that if there are more than one member representative from the same supervisory district, that consideration must go to that jurisdiction's governing board for approval. So we did follow the bylaws and the policies and procedures of the Calaveras Council of Governments in taking that item before the County Board of Supervisors.
Okay, so you're saying that this candidate has been approved by COG to be a voting member on the council?
Correct.
And where would that person be?
Subject to...
Correct, and subject to ratification by the Board of Supervisors because of the specification within our Joint Powers Agreement that requires their approval prior to him taking his position on the COG Board.
Just like any other applicant?
It's only for an applicant if there's one or more people representing the same supervisory district.
Okay, so now we're getting down to this. We've got a crowded, we're not evenly distributed with members, and so we're going to need the Board of Supervisors to do something special. Whereas, if the COG Board wanted to fill the vacancy for District Three, they would not need Board of Supervisors' approval or consideration. Am I correct with that?
If they did approve an applicant from District Three, and there was not currently a citizen member from District Three sitting on the board, they would be able to do that without ratification or approval of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, and we don't have a permanent member from District Three?
The COG Board at the meeting at which they appointed Justin Cantolano as the public member, they appointed our alternate from District Three, Mr. Muterties.
Okay, so that goes before the board, and that's going, needs board approval?
That would not require board approval. The COG Board approved it, and as you see, we have Mr. Muterties joining us.
What happens with the third? Why is there confusion? Now we have three vacancies? Who's going to fill the third vacancy? And is that going to create a situation where now you're sideways to your own bylaws?
We would not be sideways to our bylaws, but you are correct. We currently now, this cycle, because it did take, I believe, a year or more till we got to this point, what we have in our bylaws is where there's a rotation. So we currently had an open vacancy that we were trying to fill. We have a recruitment process, but the COG Board extended that recruitment process in an effort to get additional applicants. So now, we currently have two additional members whose positions on the COG Board will become vacant effective December of 2015. So now, we are currently advertising for the vacancy that was not approved by the Board of Supervisors, and we are currently advocating, advertising for the two positions, one of them being Mr. John Gomes, and the other one being Mr. Jim Hemminger, who's not here. Their terms are set to expire December 2015. The process for their application would be no different than the process for anyone interested in applying. They're required to fill out an application. They're required to step down from the podium and interview for the position. And you are correct, it depends on the appointment that the COG Board makes that will determine the district makeup of the COG Board, and whether or not I need to go back to the Board of Supervisors for approval or ratification of that appointment.
So are you waiting for the last application to come in to see how that will affect the mix of districts represented before you go to the Board of Supervisors? Or do you have the Board of Supervisors sprinkle holy water on the two that are before us now, and then hope that the third vacancy is filled by somebody that doesn't create a conflict within existing districts that already have representation from citizens?
We have a deadline on the application process, so we will receive all applications that come from the community up until that deadline. They're date stamped and timestamped. The COG Board will review all applications that staff receives. The COG Board will then have an opportunity to interview all of the applicants in a public forum. At that point, they will make their decisions in open public forum as to who they wish to appoint based upon those interviews.
And when would that deadline be?
The deadline for the applications, I'm not aware, but do you have that?
Yeah, it's November 20th.
November 20th.
I'm sorry?
November 20th.
This November 20th?
Yes. And then it'll go before the COG Board for their consideration, the first Wednesday in December.
How many times has the COG Board operated without a full complement of council members?
We have been...
If by November 20th, you don't have an applicant, do you run with six?
We do have, we are vacant one position right now, and we have been vacant that position for a year while we've been going through this process, this very public process. We will have the two sitting members, Mr. Hemminger and Mr. Gomes, with us through December. They will fill their role up until that point. I will not have any vacant positions, other than the one that has been vacant for the past year.
Okay. Okay. Well, I just hope that you give some consideration to District Three for a lot of different reasons, only because we've been without representation for a long time. And, you know, I think Mr. Mason was making a good point when he talked about the arterial aspect of Highway Four, the corridor that we have. And if we don't have anyone that we can talk to, or be our representative to bring issues before the COG, we're kind of at a disadvantage. And District Three has some problems that are peculiar and need special attention, and it takes someone from that district or that area. And I'm not talking necessarily just Angels Camp or Coppaopolis, I'm talking the Arnold area as well. There are some problems that need to be addressed. I don't know if COG is the agency that's going to take care of it, but I'm certainly thrilled at the prospect of Mr. Muterties possibly being our representative on the COG from Arnold, only because I've seen the work that he does, and I'm very impressed with him. So maybe someone will do like Debbie, or Ms. Ponte did, and rush to promote somebody so that we can get going. Thank you.
Is there any other further comment regarding the Board of Supervisors' consideration of the citizen member appointment?
Can you share one of these?
Absolutely.
I know, I'm sorry. In answer to who would you go to, I would say you go to any one of these, because we are all regional, and if you're not looking at a regional aspect of Calaveras, then we need to hold your feet to the fire and make sure you are, because it's regional. We don't have little pockets here and there. And everyone needs to know what's going on in your district. Everyone needs to know what's going on in my district in order to make full, well-informed decisions. So it's regional.
Thank you.
Justin Cantolano, West Point. I just wanted to address some of the council and to the public. I just want you to know that I am a professional in the transportation industry. I hold two degrees from two different colleges in the transportation industry. So I would be able to do the job thoroughly in this entire county, whether I live in a certain district or not. And I think that if people are concerned about transportation, a professional in the industry should be part of the council, and I would be able to make those kind of decisions that would be beneficial to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Any further comment from the board? Okay, this was...
I'd like to make this one, because I could.
Come on up.
It's just, as I say, I'm reading at this whole operation here, and because I'm a constitutionalist, and I've taught the Constitution in Sonora, one problem I have with this whole operation is that you guys sit down and decide who's going to be your member. And if you don't possibly fit the clique, you won't be. And what you need in government is individual people thinking individual ways to make things more efficient. And that may be people who may not row the boat the way you wish it to be rowed. And that has been proven all through history, that it's usually the people who want change that is disagreeable to the people who are sitting in the chairs. When they win, things are much better for everybody. There's only officially, I was shocked to read that, that it is not elected officials who appoint you, but it's yourself that appoints members with you.
Okay, again, we want to make sure that we can be as accurate as possible. It is the elected Board of Supervisors members and the elected city council members from Angels Camp that appoint the public members. The public members have no voting rights for the appointment of other...
But don't you guys sit down, and when somebody is, before they vote yes on a person, don't you sit with them and make sure they fit the mold?
No, they actually...
I mean, I don't say you do that, but can you actually do that if four of you are disagreed with somebody?
No, due to the Brown Act, all interviews and questions are handled right here in this meeting room. At the podium, the applicant stands right where you are.
Okay, I just, you know, there's no doubt with me that when a person is appointed by the supervisors to the Planning Commission, it's open and above board, okay? I'm not saying you guys aren't. But maybe you're not as open and above board as other people are. I don't know, because the only reason is because I haven't been around.
Okay.
I don't know. I just don't know.
Okay.
But I find you most interesting. Thank you.
Mr. McManus?
If I could take just one more moment and follow up on what Mr. Mason said. I've been up here about 35 years myself. The reason I'm so, you know, COG has never been anything that's been, you know, high on the radar for me. You know, there's just too much going on. Government is too big already. You can't get around to every meeting and every committee. But during the years, some years ago, the COG was involved through a supervisor with citizen members in my district, District Three, called the Scenic Byway, which turned out to be kind of a black hole for a whole bunch of money. And I know people have tried to find out where that money went and how it was spent. That goes back to my earlier question about archives, that perhaps this stuff will magically reappear in the new Exela system, and we can get some answers to that. So whenever there's an appearance of impropriety, if I'm in the sphere of whatever branch of government it is, I like to say something about it. In my humble opinion, and it's just a feeling that I have, I'm not making any accusations, I'm not here to put anyone down or anything else, but I feel this impropriety start... starting to grow a little bit again, and that would be between someone who has a sympathy for the marijuana industry and someone who is trying to get, who is before the seat of government, trying to get a troubled application approved for a marijuana dispensary. Now, I don't know, I'm not saying that there's any connection. All I'm saying is that there is an impropriety that hint, that makes me uncomfortable. Maybe I'm just that way, maybe I'm just, you know, don't feel good about some of the things I've seen before, and I'm not putting other people's sins on anyone on this commission. But to me, it appears as though that is starting to happen again, and I really hate to see it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any final comment on the Board of Supervisors' consideration of the citizen member appointment?
Good evening. I, I'm sorry that I can't hear you as well as I can hear off this. You are wonderful, I can hear you.
Please, please state your name and where you're from.
This seems to be a very inner group. My name is Judy Robertson, Murphy's, owned a house since eighty-nine, retired teacher. I'm confused about something, and so this is a question. In all that I've heard tonight, where does the interview process come in?
You want to explain the process?
The interview process comes in after the applications have been received by staff. We date stamp them, we put them in an agenda packet that's made public to the community and the board members. And then, at the first meeting of December, we ask all the applicants to come before the Calaveras Council of Governments. The sitting members on the COG Board that are the citizen members then join the other applicants in the audience. The only remaining people here would be the voting Board of Supervisors and city council members. They hear the applicants do a brief presentation of their interest, and then they have an opportunity for question and answers between each applicant before they make the decision, also that evening in public. And so, that will be the first Wednesday of December, which will be the next and final round of interviews for the next cycle.
Well, I'm confused by the fact that both gentlemen mentioned that in the voting, that there seems to be a predisposition to a certain type of person that you want on it, rather than representation for the entire county.
No. I've been a public member of this board for over two years now, and I've never had that come, that perception.
But this is what's been shared. I'm just listening.
Right.
I'm listening to what's being shared. So, you're listening to the public. The other comment that was mentioned had to do with, this is regional. That's why we have representatives for individual areas. This is an unusual situation in that we live in a blessed county that has a varied, big vary, varied interests, economy, and it looks to me, we're from Contra Costa originally, much more similar. There's one area that isn't. I can understand where you could do more regional. To me, though, when I think of Arnold, and then I think of Copper, and I think of West Point, I can't say that you could look at this regional, because everyone really does have a different perspective, and the economy is based differently. So, I understand when people have said that this needs to be taken care of, that District Three really does need to be represented properly, and that really needs to be in consideration for your opening or for future. And thank you for your attention, and thank you for your participation in trying to help our county.
Thank you. Are there any other public members that would like to address the board? Seeing none, I want to thank you for your comments, and this item will be noted as the interview processes, or the application processes are open and available through November 20th. Our next agenda item is now agenda item number ten, the fiscal year 2015-16 funding allocations with two resolutions.
November nine.
What, you didn't do that?
November nine.
Okay, all right. Let's start first then with item number nine. Sorry. Fiscal year 2015-16 overall work program amendment number one. Oh, we did that. Oh, no, we did the operations budget amendment number one. I'm sorry. Okay, the fiscal year 2015-16 overall work program amendment number one, fiscal item number nine, to be brought forth by Melissa Ragio.
Thank you, Mr. Fair. Staff recommends the council approve Resolution Number 1609, adopting the fiscal year 2015-16 overall work program amendment number one, with authorization given to the executive director to execute the overall work program agreement between Caltrans and the council. Staff is also requesting the approval of Resolution fifteen, or sixteen dash ten, adopting the revised planning, programming, and monitoring expenditure plan. The fiscal year fifteen-16 amendment number one reflects carryover funding and project balances. There are only two additional work elements from the final previously approved. Those work element numbers are number ten and number thirteen. Number ten is the Mobility Management Program, which we just approved in the previous item, which was the operations budget. The other work element, number thirteen, is the development of Consolidated Transportation Services Agency Guidelines. And as I said, this overall work program amendment number one reflects the operations budget that was just previously approved. And if anyone in the council had any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer.
Any members from the board wishing to address agenda item number nine? Any interested members from the public wanting to address item number nine? Seeing none, do we have a motion by the board to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kearney. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Muterties. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved six oh. All right, item number ten, the fiscal year 2015-16 funding allocations, Resolution sixteen eleven and sixteen twelve, again presented by Melissa Ragio.
Thank you, Mr. Fair. So, I'll take ten A first. This is the fiscal year 2015-16 Regional Surface Transportation Program allocation. Staff is recommending the approval of Resolution sixteen dash eleven, approving the allocation of RSTP funds in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand to fund the fiscal year 2015-16 overall work program amendment number one. This also is tied to the two previous items. We need this allocation to fund the operations budget, and at this time, I have three questions.
Item ten A, do we have any questions by the board? Any public comment? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Muterties, seconded by Councilmember Ponte. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved six oh. Item ten B, also to be presented by Melissa Ragio.
Thank you, Mr. Fair. This is the fiscal year 2015-16 Local Transportation Fund allocations. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number sixteen dash twelve, authorizing the allocation of LTF funding in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand for the fiscal year operations budget and overall work program. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any council member comments, questions? Any interested members from the public? All right. Do I have a motion to approve fiscal resolution sixteen twelve?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kearney. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Morse. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved six oh. We have item number eleven, the update to the council on the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, RTIP, funding strategy for the State Route Four Wagon Trail Project. Ms. Eats?
Thank you. I wish to present the, this evening, the programming request defining the constrained project for the 2016 Regional Transportation Improvement Program. This information presented to you tonight comes from the presentation, PowerPoint presentation that we did on the RTIP and the Wagon Trail Project, and my hope this evening is to get direction to move forward with the release of, and the development of the draft Regional Transportation Improvement Program, October twenty-eighth, for council consideration in November. As the council is aware, we heard a presentation on the Wagon Trail Project and the RTIP, which is the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, which is funding that comes to the region from the State Transportation Improvement Program. The objective of the COG Board and the direction at our previous meeting was to prioritize the Wagon Trail Project for readiness within our funding means, to work within the constraints of our existing funding, not to leverage future shares, but to continue to look for partnership and leverage dollars from the state and feds while we use our local investment to get this project as near to construction-ready as we possibly can. So, we've outlined the strategy. One of the requirements for our RTIP is the project programming request. One of the things that we didn't have clarification on was what the constrained project would be. We've talked with the project team, and that project has been identified in the PPR, the Project Programming Request, as an improvement to the Appaloosa Road intersection and any additional operational improvements within the corridor that we could construct within the constraints of our regional shares. So, our goal, as we talked about last time, is really focused on that western segment. We're environmentally clearing the entire corridor. We are focused on the western segment for design and right-of-way acquisition, and we've identified a constrained construction project that we can build within our financial means. Alpine County staff has made the commitment to continue our MOU and the loan of one point four million dollars for construction, so that'll go towards the intersection improvement that we've identified. We've also allowed ourselves opportunity. Should state and federal funding not be realized, and we don't find that opportunity to leverage our local investment with outside resources, we've pushed the programming for right-of-way and construction out two years from our previous schedule. And we've done that because we've made commitments to the property owners that we won't be acquiring right-of-way for anything we can't reasonably foresee constructing. So, should construction dollars not be materialized, then we will identify what's needed for right-of-way for the Appaloosa Road improvements, and then the COG Board in 2017 will have an opportunity to go through this programming exercise once again, and perhaps at that point, evaluate the projects along the corridor, or whether or not we'd like to move forward with a new call for projects, and continue to invest in other locations within, within the county. So, before you, I just ask for your direction, and want to make sure that this is supportive of your previous direction given to me last month, so that we can move forward with the draft, which is a very comprehensive, large document. And I'm happy to entertain any questions that the council or the public may have on this item.
Councilmember, questions or comments? Ms. Ponte?
Thank you. I like this strategy. I think that, you know, 2016 is going to be this turning point on the ballot in regards to funding for transportation and where we, what we might or might not get. So, I think looking at that, too, in this equation, as we look at funding strategies, and, you know, tomorrow night's open meeting about the Wagon Trail and people being able to hear about the environmental report and being able to ask questions, I think, too, would have a good understanding as to why, you know, this strategy would work better for us. If we don't have the funding to take care of the eastern part of the route, if we want to call that Bonanza to Pool Station, the western is from Pool Station to Stallion, Appaloosa.
Our focus for the western segment would be from Bonanza to Appaloosa Road intersection. So, that's what we're seeking, design and right-of-way.
Okay.
And then, we have construction funding identified for the Appaloosa Road intersection improvement, and time to adjust that schedule. I believe the other segment would be from Appaloosa to, I believe, Gelding would be the middle, and then beyond that, the eastern segment would be Gelding to just before Stockton Road.
Okay, all right. And then, we also find with the funding, too, that we still have the security of Alpine's commitment to us. Do we see anything happening with that? Are you pretty comfortable with Alpine's commitment?
Well, that is a, that is a great question. So, it is a political decision that will need to go before the Alpine County Local Transportation Commission. So, staff is working on the letter of agreement. It's very similar to the previous letter of agreement, but it is a political decision that needs to be made by their local transportation commission. But staff sees the opportunity to continue to keep that loan on the books, so to speak, and in Calaveras's RTIP towards the Wagon Trail project. They do have a local project that they prioritize as their number one. They're seeking alternative federal funding, and they're hoping that they will realize that funding, and if they do, then this loan will be, will go through without issue. In 2017, however, if they didn't realize that federal funding, they will be reevaluating the strategy with us, and then they may be saying we need to prioritize our local road project over the Wagon Trail.
All right.
So, that is known and discussed by staff, but it is a decision that will ultimately be brought before you to be decided, and also their local transportation commission.
So, we're looking in 2017 for their board to make a commitment one way or the other?
We would, we would bring the letter of agreement now with the development of our RTIPs. So, staff is working on that, so when we bring the drafts, that you can also see copies of that letter of agreement and have that signed. In 2017, what we'll know is if we were able to realize any other leveraged state or federal funds, as will Alpine. And so, if they were successful, that they won't be going then through a reprogramming exercise, and we'll be able to keep the one point four million sort of parked in the year that we need it for construction. If they're not successful, then they will have to reevaluate that. That's another reason why we've pushed the timing back for the right-of-way and construction two years, allowing us more time to really work with our partners at District Ten and Caltrans to see if we can bring additional dollars to this project.
Okay, thank you.
Other board comment? Any public comment regarding the RTIP funding strategy for State Route Four Wagon Trail Seeing none, the action requested was information and direction. I'm going to ask for a poll of the board that we, I would like to see if we have council agreement that we should go ahead and encourage Melissa to move forward with the strategy as presented.
Yeah, I think that we should. It was covered pretty thoroughly in the last meeting, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes, I was. Want to make sure it was the one, so much has happened in the last month. I encourage her to do it. I appreciate keeping us updated on it. I'm going to do everything possible to be at Bret Hart tomorrow to listen to the public and get, you know, their feedback on it, too. It is a long, enduring, complicated project. Keep going.
Thank you.
I hear consensus from the board that you should move forward with that.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Item number twelve, action requested is council consideration of a change of the monthly meeting time for the Calaveras Council of Governments, presented by Melissa Eats.
All right, staff is recommending that the council consider changing the time as the, of the Calaveras Council of Governments' monthly meeting. I've gone ahead and I've thrown out a time for discussion purposes of three o'clock. I've also identified the meeting times of other RTPAs and MPOs that you might find familiar to you. This item was brought to the Calaveras Council of Governments as a discussion in March. The direction was given to staff to go back to the Board of Supervisors and the City Council respectively, to evaluate the JPA and our ability to make the change to the date and time without their direct approval and authority. The Board of Supervisors did approve that JPA modification, allowing you that flexibility. When we went back to the City Council, the city clerk had, had notified us that the previous JPA amendment, that the City Council had passed a resolution giving the COG Board already at that point in time, the blanket authority to set the meeting date and time as you see fit. So, now, we have that permission from the Board of Supervisors and the City Council. The JPA amendment has been modified and signed, and so, I've thrown out a time, and my hope is that the council has a discussion about a meeting day or time that is best for you. And so, at this point, I'd like to turn it over for council discussion.
Council discussion. Council discussion.
Question?
Yes.
What's the fiscal impact changing in time?
So, for COG staff, it would save overtime for one position. We pay time and a half for the hours participating in this meeting for one position. Management staff has MTO, management time off, where they're compensated 40 hours in anticipation of having to work beyond the traditional eight-to-five work hour.
Plus, there's county staff here also that, in addition to the cost of the COG labor, they may be thrown into overtime. No? How about paid time off or anything of that nature?
Yeah, this is.
So, there's a cost to that too. So, the fiscal impact would be a positive one if it was moved up a little earlier.
From the COG Board, it would save an hour and a half for each hour for one position that is here.
Have we asked all the folks that have to come and report how they feel?
Right now, we're polling the board, then we'll open it up for public comment as well. This is an item that has been looked at and addressed throughout 2015. Further board comment?
Just, I'll mention it. It was something that I brought forward earlier this year. I had some folks who ride transit and weren't able to participate because the transit system stopped and it didn't include the nighttime hours. There was the location of the government center in its darkness and wayfinding to where it was a little bit uncomfortable for some folks coming to a night meeting in regards to the lighting and parking and such. And in my review of the few years on COG, we had majority of the folks who are attending the COG meetings were better suited to be attending during daytime hours versus nighttime hours. So, not to say that was the majority, but the majority of the time when we looked at who from the public was attending, we were getting the participation. That's where the request was coming from, was having more daylight, daytime-type meetings for COG versus nighttime.
Further council comment?
I know I'm an alternate and I'm not here full-time, but I just want the rest of the board to also consider with the changes coming up, those who also work a full-time job as well and to maybe meet in a happy medium as well for those who may have to take, you know, an hour off of work to make it here, to make the commitment that they've made to make it to these meetings. But also for the public who do come to these meetings, they're also coming from work as well. So, it's, I think there need to be some kind of happy medium to make, you know, what works for us, but also for the public to be involved.
Thank you.
I think that's important. What would your medium time be?
I would look at anywhere between 4:30 to 5:30, somewhere between there. I think it, you know, you still light out. I mean, you're cutting that back pretty, while we're still getting out a good time. But you're still not, for me, for example, I would still have to take out an hour out of my work time to get here with commute. But for those, I don't know what time other people get to work or have to take public transit to get here. Where they're coming from in the county to get here on the bus. Is it 20 minutes versus 45 minutes with stops? If that is your concern.
Okay.
I would be supportive of whatever time everyone else is okay with. I don't work, so.
It doesn't matter to me either way, but it seems like if you move it to 4:30, which I think your points are very valid as far as the public, but if you move it to 4:30, then whatever benefits you gain from moving the meeting time for staff goes right out the window.
I think this was more an accessibility issue than a concern about cost or staff time, with all due respect staff. We're looking to try and make sure that, I think, participation in the meetings is still available to as many people as possible, but respective of the fact that at a 6:30 start time, our meetings run at times to eight o'clock, nine o'clock. And it's getting pretty dark and pretty late at that point, especially with the advent of no public transportation available at that time. Having said that, is there any public comment to the board's consideration of changing the board meeting time?
Hi, I'm Ann Radford, Angels Camp. I'm also on the Healthcare District Board. Our meetings start at 7:30 a.m. and that can be rough too. But we do get a large crowd. So, anytime that you have meetings between nine and five, it's going to impact a lot of people. I know personally, I can't go to meetings at 9:00 a.m. I can't go to supervisor meetings unless I take a day off work. So, those are hard. So, anytime you change them, it's difficult. I think that the working folks need to be considered like you have and I appreciate that, that, you know, they may get off work at five or six, but if they really want to make a meeting, they're going to get here to make a meeting. I know transportation, and that's why we're all here, is a very important issue and the bus service and everything like that is not always reliable. It may take you an hour, two hours to get picked up again. I don't know what time the buses stop in the evenings, but I would like to see you keep the meetings in early evening. And just remember, from April to start of October, September, we do have light, a lot of light. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Kathy Mason-Murphys. I don't have a pony in this show, so I don't really care, but I'm picking those that come straight from work. You need fuel to endure these meetings and I'm just wondering whether we would eat, get to eat dinner or some meal. If you go straight from work to this meeting, I don't, do you bring snacks? I don't know. But it's your choice.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding the change of the meeting time? Any further board discussion?
One of the things I want to clarify too, so what I heard you say is with the City of Angels, if you've kind of been given the Open Avenue, and I think the board gave the Open Avenue too, that it's, at this point, it's kind of up to the COG as to what time we meet. We don't have to go back to our respective boards.
That's correct.
So, we were able to modify the GPA to that.
JPA.
JPA, excuse me. Been late, I haven't even. So, you know, like we have done at the Board of Supervisors meeting is that there is a fifth Tuesday of the month and we have a night meeting. And sometimes those night meetings are very well attended and otherwise not attended at all by many members of the public and there's other commissions and such. And the beauty of some of these other things is that it's been flexible in time. So, if we have a project, say the Wagon Trail, and instead of making it, you know, we are having a side meeting for that particular project as we look at the environmental impact report, but I think we have that flexibility now as a COG Board to say, you know, we want to meet at the six o'clock hour or we want to meet at the seven o'clock hour, whatever time it is that we think would best suit the public on whatever topic it might be. I find most times our business of the COG is, you know, a two-to-three-hour meeting and, you know, if we have a special project, that might merit meeting early in the day or a night meeting or, you know, maybe even a morning meeting, depending on what it might be. So, I'm pleased that our respective boards have been able to modify the JPA for that because I think that really stranglehold us on some, on some meetings in the past about, you know, we had to meet at a certain time and so on. So, we have that flexibility going forward, which I think would be helpful to meet more of the community needs as we hear about the different projects that come forward that need public input that may not be able to be here at a normal meeting time.
Thank you. Any further comment by the board? I have heard a suggestion potentially of maybe thinking in the 4:30 to 5:30 window. We have a staff recommendation at three o'clock. I will put it out for a motion for somebody to entertain.
I would make a motion to move our meetings to the 4:00 p.m. hour on the first Wednesday of every month.
I second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor to move the meeting time to 4:00 p.m. by Councilmember Ponti, seconded by Councilmember Kearney. Discussion. We've had it, okay? Now that we have a defined time, just again, making sure that we have the conversation before we vote. I also heard comments too about folks that have to take time off. And as an individual who also works, although I work an earlier shift, I'm very mindful and respectful of that countywide and especially as spread out as this county is, transportation, especially from the more outlying regions of the West Point, Arnold corridors, is, it takes a little time to get down here to San Andreas. As your chair, I'm trying to get the conversation still flowing. I will personally say that I think 4:00 p.m. is a little early in the afternoon. When I first heard the 4:30 to 5:30, I was thinking more like five o'clock would be a good compromise. Most people hopefully are off between four and five in the afternoon and/or would have the ability to just take an hour off of their day to get down here to a meeting with a five o'clock start. My thinking is that would still get us out of here around seven to eight o'clock at a three-hour meeting, which is still, to me, a long meeting when you get to three hours, but 8:00 p.m. is not that late in the evening to leave San Andreas and then get back home. So, that is my comment. I don't know if I, I guess I would put forth a motion to amend the comment or the motion on the floor from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
I second that.
To, okay, so now we have a.
We had a motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
You got a call.
By Councilmember Ponti.
Okay.
Councilmember, or Ms. Fuldor has seconded my suggestion, but I think I'm offering a friendly amendment. Would you be amenable to a friendly amendment to 5:00 p.m.?
Well, you don't really have any particular rules of order. Traditionally, you'd have to vote on a question.
Okay.
Present a motion. If it's passed, that is over. If not, if it fails, then the discussion concludes.
Well, we have a motion on the floor to move the meeting time to 4:00 p.m. We have a second. I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Okay, we have a three-three. So, we're back to the discussion again.
I'm assuming that motion died?
That motion has died.
Is there going to be a competing motion?
There can be another motion introduced. Would someone like to introduce?
Why don't we move the five o'clock out?
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ponti. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved six, oh, 5:00 p.m. Thank you, council. I want to thank both the public and the staff and the council for the consideration of this. I think this has been an issue that's been before the board for quite some time and to see a positive direction change that's amenable to everybody is a good thing. So, thank you. County report, verbal informational. Do we have a county report this evening? Mr. Crowitz.
Sorry, working on email. Quick report on the fire. We have 117 square miles burned. Significant impact to the south fork of the McColomy River, shed above the powerhouse, greater than significant impact to the north fork of the Calaveras River, the Jesus Maria Creek area. I'm expecting damage assessment and burn maps from CalOES on their emergency response, post-fire emergency response, so that we can deploy BMPs, the Best Management Practice implementation, to prevent loss of life, property or infrastructure on a as quick as possible basis. And then I have other areas throughout the county where I have more minor impacts to some of the smaller creeks. Murray Creek is in trouble in a localized area. Some problems up on Railroad Flat along the creek running on that road that we will have to address very quickly because of its importance as a collector, as an arterial road within the fire burn area. I am still pushing ahead with my highest areas for stabilization, which will be Railroad Flat, Mountain Ranch, upper and lower, above and below Mountain Ranch, and Sheep Ranch Road up to Highway Four. Once we get these areas deployed, we will start working from Highway 26 and moving downward to where we feel we will have a high probability of success for stabilization. The jury is still out now in terms of what type of federal and state aid we will get for the watershed restoration, but we are working every avenue as possible. Any questions?
You've been busy?
No.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah, thank you for everything you've been doing.
So, the one warning that will become public knowledge, and so I think it is now on television, is the likelihood of us taking damage to our county roads that will cause closures before, during and after rain events this winter is very high.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Sure, we can have public comment.
It's just, it'll be so sad when it gets about all the trees are going to have to be moved. I was, we were up there, my wife and I was up towards it and there's a hell of a lot of trees that have to come down like a fall.
Thank you for the comment. I was trying to focus my comment on our transportation system, the issue about trees within.
How about trees along the roadway?
The trees along the roadway. We have been falling the hazard trees that are obviously killed and is likely to fall across our right-of-way and we have been removing those that we had fallen during the fire event to those roads that were accessible to us without getting in the way of either Cal Fire or PG&E. Those trees are being treated, green waste processed and finding new life in other uses, specifically firewood for seniors and burn victims if they so choose, as well as grinding and redeployment as erosion control BMPs. There is a very limited access that the county or other public agencies can do going onto private lands and that includes the approximate 35,000 trees that are being fallen by PG&E AT&amp;T along their, along their utility corridors. They have the legal right to drop those trees onto the land and walk. And they are dropping those trees as part of their agreements with the CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission, for those of you who are not into the acronyms. But those trees are now, once they're, whether they're standing or on the ground, are the property and responsibility of the underlying property owner. So, we're not sure what's going to happen with those trees yet. I'm working on options for private landowners for disposal or reuse. The one thing that we do know is that any commercial reuse, meaning selling to a mill, bartering, trading, requires an emergency permit through Cal Fire to do those types of commercial activities. So, we've put together a lot of these handouts and have been posting them on our websites and this one has been documented as a Cal Fire and it is on the Public Works website.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Crowitz. Any other public comment for the public county report? Seeing none, transit report.
Deborah Mullin, Public Works, Calaveras Transit. Transit was also impacted by the fire. Our road closures caused routes to be canceled up to the Mountain Ranch, West Point Railroad and Jackson. Those routes were closed altogether that one day during the fire, that roads were, everything was up in the air, smoke and emergency vehicles. Transit assisted with evacuations in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department and Cal Works worked together to. worked together to give people transportation out of their, mostly seniors, out of their places, and we were assisted by Common Grounds in that, in that effort. And then when people were in the evacuation centers, Transit was used to shuttle people to Valley Springs Gym for showers, the shower shuttle. And then during the time that the local assistance center was here, we provided shuttles for people from the evacuation centers to come to the CLAP. And we manned a booth here to give out information about the CLAP, about Transit to people who may have lost their vehicles, and so we were looking at the possibility of new Transit customers and just providing information. In some cases, we were giving out green tickets, those passes, to people that found themselves with very little suddenly. So now, like Jeff said, we're, it's a little bit up in the air about the reimbursement for all these efforts and reductions in service, but we're working with CAL Trans. There might be 5311 funds. We're working with CAL OES and, and all the routes along with the county. So we've documented all our expenses, and we'll be moving forward with that. I think that's about it for the fire. Oh, I do want to say Transit itself was evacuated twice when San Andreas was evacuated, and that involved moving all the buses out. The newer buses that are still have CAL Trans as the lien holder had to be moved to behind gated facilities, so the Paratransit Services Operations Manager took them to Gold Creek Subdivision behind that gate. The other vehicles went to Valley Springs Fitness Center, who very graciously gave us space and utilities to set up an alternate dispatch center. So we continued our operations that way. The evacuation got lifted, we moved all the vehicles back, and then we were, once again, evacuated and did the whole thing over again. So it's quite a time. So, in other news, the Board of Supervisors extended the contract with Paratransit Services for another 21 months to, will expire now at the end of June 2017. We negotiated a reduction in the cost of operations through that contract, a minor reduction until we start the intercity service to Stockton, and then we're going to have a good 12% reduction in the cost of operations with the additional miles. Fire and contract, other projects are, have been sidelined a little bit, moving forward slowly during this time.
Any board comment for Transit?
Deborah, I just have to say that Transit was absolutely wonderful during the fire, not only providing from the, from the evacuation centers to what the needs were, but very accommodating to the needs. And I know you went through a loss, and I just admire your, your ability to keep going forward and helping everybody out.
All right. Thank you, and I want to call out to Cynthia Lawrence, her, the Operations Manager of Paratransit. Remember, she was very involved in the, in the disaster preparedness exercise, which great irony turned out to be what happened, and that gave her, plus the training she's had, she's had, was in a good position to bring a perspective and course of action for Transit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other...
Great job.
Questions? Thank you.
Any further council comments? Any public comment for Transit? Thank you, Deborah. City report. Mr. Hanham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave Hanham, Planning Director for the City of Angels. Just wanted to comment on a few of our projects. One is our CMAC project for Murphy's Grade Road. We're moving forward on that. It's very slowly right now. We, we just interviewed an engineering tech, so hopefully we get that person on staff here in the next couple of weeks and start picking up more steam on that project. Our other CMAC project with Angels Creek Trail, the council last night just passed the last of the financial agreements with CAL Trans, and we'll be shipping that off. We have that signed and shipped off tomorrow, so then we can start doing funds, and we're working with COG staff to, to get, to get some assistance with that project. That project's going to be pretty complicated once you start looking at it, and I think, I think we're doing the right thing there. We're also working with the COG on GIs through a project, Destination Angels Camp, regarding businesses and things. We're, we're utilizing GIs at the COG, even though the city does have it, just our lack of staff and our, and our, sometimes our inability, because we're only one man in this department. So that's, that's been going very well. Amber's done a really good job with that, working with Amy Augustine, who's the consultant for DAC. And then we look to hopefully expand that to include the whole city. Right now, it's just more of a, a project base, but we're looking to expand that to the whole city. Our partnership planning grant for the 449 is coming, coming down to a speedy end here in the next probably two or three, two or three months. We just had our last public meeting. I don't know if we had that before the last meeting or not, but that went very well. We had another good attendance of about 45, 50 people, about 40, 45 people, great comments. And I think the plan, I think the plan, when it's said and done, is definitely inquired, definitely included public input, and hopefully be able to let, give the city a tool to move forward with CAL Trans in the PSR process. So we hopefully be, and we look forward to be starting that process, working with the council, working with our council to start that process as soon as this, this is over. And just as that project is winding down, the partnership planning grant for the downtown area is starting to heat up. So we've got the RFP just closed for that. We've got two consultants that we're looking at, and hopefully be able to hire one here in the next few weeks. Let's see, what else do we have going on? Other than that, like I said, we just hired, we're in the process of hiring an engineering tech, so that'll make our engineering department number two, two people in the engineering department. So we'll, so we're looking forward to move there. So unless you have any questions about any of our projects I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Any inquiries from the public? Thank you, Mr. Hanham. Mr. Baker, CAL Trans report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My condolences to everyone in the county that's affected by the fire. In planning, I don't get a lot of that, and I know a lot of people up here are interacting with CAL Trans. Probably the best thing for me to do in terms of maintenance is handling a lot of what's going on up here is to stay out of their way. If people are having experiences that, you know, as things wind down that need to be addressed, certainly bring them to me, and I'll be happy to pass those along and get those to the right people. Couple other things. I have a new set of mile marker. I'll leave that with Carly. You know, puts that in perspective, doesn't it? Then I think the one last is the, the CTC recommendations for the Active Transportation Grants were announced. They aren't actually approvals at this point, they're just recommendations by staff. So out of the mountain counties, there are five counties up in the mountains, in District 10, we had, I believe, eight applications, five for Tuolumne and three for Amador, and one of them in Plymouth was funded. So that's our first out of the program, and it's a step in the right direction. So there's always hope for that. Otherwise, if you had questions?
Any questions from the council for Transit? Any public...
Thank you.
Thank you. We addressed item 17 already. Council report. I'm sorry, staff reports. Any other staff reports besides 17?
I just wanted to make the public in the council aware, I know Supervisor Ponti has mentioned it several times, but the public hearing for the wagon trail project draft environmental report will be tomorrow evening, and so we have the public notice available for the public and the audience this evening. It should also be available on our website, and then the draft document is available at the Public Works Department and other various locations. So if you need that information, don't hesitate to ask, but the meeting will be tomorrow, and the public notice should be at the podium. And that's all I have.
What's the deadline, Melissa?
That I'm not sure. Carly, do you have the public notice?
20th of November. It's a date that sticks with me.
And hopefully we say...
Thank you.
Meeting's at 6:00 PM at Bret Hart?
The meeting is at 6:00 to 8:00 at Bret Hart tomorrow. I'm looking for the deadline on those comments, and I'm not seeing where we, we put that information in this flyer. Do you see it? October 24th. There we go. Thank you, Carly.
Thank you.
October 24th.
Is it in the theater building at Bret Hart?
Right.
The multipurpose room?
No, not the theater, the multipurpose room.
Right next to it. Okay.
Right around the corner from there.
No other staff reports? Council reports?
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Kearney?
No.
Just news?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right. Well, again, the county has gone through really a horrific fire event, listening a little bit earlier to some concerns. We're not out of the woods yet with respect to the long-term effects of this fire, but I certainly want to compliment both the county staff that responded. Working for CCWD, we had some issues, and we were able to address pretty much all of them by keeping the water on everywhere except for Sheep Ranch. I know our staff worked really hard, but I think it's just a testimony to this county in general. People really try and look out for each other, and it's a nice place to be regardless of what's going on up here. And I just want to say that our government agencies really did respond, I think, as best as they could for a pretty horrific event. Our next meeting will be, and I will say this, November 4th at 5:00 PM here at the council member, or the supervisor's chamber. With that, meeting is adjourned. Ms. Crane? We did that at the start of the meeting.
It's just that our, it's just that the disaster has peppered through all of our , all of our conversations, but then it's something I wanted to share.
Sure. Come forward.
Normally, I wouldn't do this, but I, I was just hoping that we might all just take a moment and picture ourselves where we were in 2004 with the Patterson Fire. We were a bullseye in the middle of this fast-moving grass fire. Our house was saved, but many around us were not. And so if we all just picture ourselves as the one house with all our neighbors burnt, you know, all the neighboring homes burnt to a crisp, down to the ground, not a leaf in sight, and then just picture, what would you do? How would you help your neighbors? Well, that's exactly what's happened here. We don't see them because we're traveling these roads, and we, they're out of sight. But out of sight should never be out of mind. And so I just wanted to share an email. First of all, I, there are many things that we might be able to do. There are opportunities for employment to help in the effort. There are many opportunities for volunteering to help in the effort. Please call or go online to the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance website to see how you can best help. They're starting to have to pull back on what they can use, so what they will accept. But I wanted to share an email that came across my computer. It says, "Are there any boots anywhere?" That's something people, we can do. "Those heavy-duty pull-on black rubber boots would help, men's and women's and kids' sizes. Thank you, everyone, for all the donations. Please don't forget about us, the displaced. The initial shock is wearing off, and the shock of reality is setting in. I believe that I am speaking for many displaced people. The first few weeks are numbing. It's hard to make simple decisions or answer a simple question. What do you need, for instance? Now it is terrifying to think that people will stop helping. I try not to look too far into the future. It is overwhelming to think of the cost, time, and energy to replace the home we built with our own hands and then replace everything in it. Then the sadness comes when I realize all the material things that are irreplaceable. I know it's just material possessions, but what I am referring to is a spiritual connection or memory to one, memory one may have to a special gift or heirloom. Please, community, don't abandon us or think it's getting easier right now. This is going to be a process. To all my fellow displaced people, I feel my heart, I feel my heart connected to you and blessings to you. To all the people that were evacuated and were able to return home, blessings to you also. I appreciate the love, care, and support of all the people, and especially our friends, new and old, and the compassionate neighbors of Calaveras County. Lorraine, Gail Lorraine. So she's obviously someone in that impacted area, so please, it is a process, it will go on for years, but please don't forget. Thank you."
Thank you, Marty. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.